Hi, Dorothea.
I was wondering if there is a lovely hum that people can hear from my end?
No.
Okay, well, that's good then. I have a AC duct near me that's making noise.
Good evening. So sorry, totally forgot you guys started at six.
So usually our convention has been to record the regular meeting and not the workshops. But if you have recommendations, Dorothea, by all means, let us know what you think is appropriate.
Does everybody hear me?
Yes.
I can't. You have video off, by the way. We can't turn it on.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, Dorothea. You've got all our videos turned off, I think.
Hello?
We're here.
Can you hear us, Dorothea?
She might have video off and we're muted.
I can hear a couple others.
I can hear all you guys. I can hear everybody, but.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, can you hear us?
Yep, now I can.
All right.
Okay. I think my headset died.
You've got the video off, too. Not that we need to be seen.
You should be able to turn your videos on.
It says you've got us turned off.
I do? Wow. All right, hold on. Well, this is interesting. Never had this happen.
Okay, Dorothea, do you know if the building inspector will be joining us?
He's supposed to be.
All right, well, while Dorothea is trying to work this out, can everyone here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, how about we skip to some minor stuff towards the end? I see that we have a meeting schedule towards the end of the packet. Did anyone have a chance to take a look at that?
What is it, Justin?
There's a draft meeting schedule for 2022.
Oh, right, 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 right. Oh, I already put that with my calendar. I don't have it in front of me.
Um, I guess the question is, is there any issues with anything? And it looks like the way it's set up is if a holiday is interfering with the meeting, it looks like it's being pushed to, meetings are being pushed to Wednesdays. Most people tend to leave Mondays open for meetings. So I was just wondering, it looks like around Presidents' Day and Martin Luther King Day, we're supposed to have meetings, but it looks like they're pushed to the Wednesdays. I think in the past, we've typically deferred them to the following week and left them on Mondays. So I just wanted to see what people think about that.
I'm okay with either.
Me, too. I'm okay with either Monday or Wednesday.
It doesn't matter to me.
Okay, at this point, I don't have any conflicts with either of the January or February ones on a Wednesday.
Yeah, and that appears to be the only ones.
Susan, do either of you have an issue with those Wednesday meetings in January and February?
Sorry, I was muted. It's fine with me, Justin.
Susan, you're muted, by the way.
I'm, I'm good. Did you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Thank you. And for now, it sounds like nobody has any concerns about this proposed meeting schedule.
Okay, that's great. I'll get them up on the website.
And if there's any, if anything needs to change, always discuss it at our next meeting. So I guess let's leave it as stated for now.
Good.
All right.
All right, we don't have video going, but we have one agenda item. I guess there is a couple variances for it for 66 state. Since Dorothea, you're not normally with us. The way we usually do this is our secretary usually pulls up the draft resolution on the screen so we can share it with the applicant. And we can discuss it. And usually, we kind of go through it, the five or six criteria that's in there. And we have, the board has a short discussion of each criteria. And that'll eventually get turned into the typed up resolutions.
Okay.
So when we get to the, ready to discuss our findings, that would be how I'd like to do it. If we just, Dorothy, if you can just pull up the resolution, screen share it, and we'll go through it.
Justin, this is Dave. Just a quick question on order and process. In the past, we've talked a little bit about voting prior to going through the wordsmithing of the findings. And we had thought maybe we'd do that in the interest of the applicant to be able to walk away with a decision before actually doing any wordsmithing. Do we want to do that? Or do we want to do it as we've done it, which is go through the findings and the wordsmithing and then vote?
I think we have to at least discuss the topics before we vote. So your vote has to be based on, and your findings have to be based on the record of discussion at the meeting.
Yes, it's just a question of whether or not we want to fine tune the wordsmithing of it before or after the vote.
I think just sharing the general thoughts are fine. I don't think we necessarily need to type things up. And sometimes our secretary has typed it up in real time and we try wordsmithing a little bit like you're saying. But I don't think grammar corrections and stuff like that need to be done during the meeting. That brings up another topic, because we still had our resolutions from last meeting outstanding. As everyone is presumably aware, Marina has accepted a position outside the village. And she's no longer with us. Dorothea's filling in for the time being. What we were trying to do on our resolutions was to share them via Google Docs or something like that. And so I guess, does anyone know of a document sharing platform that we can use so that we can get our last resolutions up there where people can see them and make, make any tweaks to them as needed?
Other than Google Docs, you're just sending around a Word doc. And I don't, I'm fine with either.
Well, why can't we just use Microsoft, like the rest of the real world?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can probably, I do have.
Office 365, you share a document, everybody could log in, edit it, right?
Do you, do you have to have Office 365 to do that?
Yeah, you have to have a subscription.
Okay, and I don't think everybody does. So I have a copy, it sounds like you have a copy, Dave may have a copy. I don't know about Joanne and Susan, but I suspect they probably don't.
I'm on a Mac.
I don't have Office 365 on mine. Sorry.
I mean, I'm okay if somebody just types up the initial copy and sends it around as an attachment. And then we just offer additions. That'll work reasonably fine.
Yep, I mean, it's clunky, but usually, there's not a lot of revisions. And if you just, so, all right, we'll do that then. So for now, unless someone has a good way of doing it through Google Docs, I don't normally use Google Docs. So I'm not that familiar with it. Like many others, I'm used to using Microsoft Word.
I changed the setting. Can you try turning on your screens?
Getting the same error message.
Now, Justin, just as a quick comment, you could set up a 365 shared doc between those who can. And then as revisions are made, whoever makes the last revision, we could just forward an updated draft out to everybody. That way, if John or I wanted to amend the document direct, we could. And, and just make sure that after we're done, that we forward it over to everybody.
Any thoughts on that? I could do that. And that would let some people get it and then forward it around the revised one a couple days later to the whole board. I mean, that seems fine enough to me.
Now, let's do that, then. It doesn't remove anybody's ability to edit it and offer comments, so I think that's all we really want to do.
Okay. And usually, there's not a whole lot of editing or comments, so.
That's right.
That may just be, okay. All right, then, the other matters is. In our workshop here, we can maybe talk a little bit about the one application. And I'm kind of curious what observations and questions people may have so that we can get a little bit of preparation for what to ask the applicants in the meeting. So looking at this application, first of all, they're constructing a new driveway. And then large driveway over what they have. And it looked like they're proposing at a wider driveway, approximately 12 and a half feet wide. I think we want to confirm that. And it's going to have a little parking area at the end in front of the garage. And the parking area, it was 20 feet wide and 19 feet long. So it would be wide enough for two cars to park there. That's my understanding of it. Now, what I don't understand exactly, and maybe if someone else has looked at that, is does anyone have an idea of approximately how wide the driveway currently is?
It's maybe, call it eight and a half.
Yeah, that's what I understood from the tape drawing.
Yeah, it's pretty narrow.
Okay, so unfortunately, I'm out of town, and I didn't get a chance to swing by there before I left to take a good look at it. But.
Dorothy, could you let me share my screen real quick?
Yep.
All right. A minute. It's still disabled. Here we go. That's what I want, just a minute. How do I, you were viewing Dorothy's screen.
Nope, hold on. I'm sorry, we're having all kinds of technical issues here.
Yep, I want to stop that. All right, here we go. Can you see that? The front of the house there, Justin?
Yes, there we go.
All right, so there's the house. And you can see the width of the driveway relative to the ramp up to the driveway.
Yep, I see that. It looks quite narrow. So I can see the definite desire for having something wider. And getting in and out of there and backing up onto a major street does not sound like fun.
Yeah.
And it looks like the house next to it does have a little parking area in the back, wider driveway.
Exactly.
They do. So there's the width of their driveway, which relative to the width of the ramp is fairly consistent. All right, and they do have that widened path in the back as well. The difference, if I go to an aerial view, I believe this shed is set farther back. Is it easy for me to go? Yeah, okay, here we go. So you can see the depth of it. And so by creating the widened path in the back for two cars, part of that is the reason for the lock coverage issue is because it's just deeper, right? And there's a code violation parking on.
Right.
I think you can't park in the front yard. I don't know about the backyard.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think you can anywhere. Now, one of the things to think on is, of course, you know, what's the general width of the various other driveways? And as you look around, you know, some of them are, I would think, wider than the standard 10-foot driveway, such as the one across the street. I didn't measure that one. But the standard driveway and what the current code suggests is 10 feet. And I would, I would venture to guess that that matches up with the width of the ramp. Do you want me to stop the share or keep it up?
I think it's helpful.
Okay. The, just a few comments here while we're looking at it. So this one here has a similar ramp, and my guess would be is that's a 10-foot driveway. If you go down the street to this one, that one is wider than 10 foot, but it is an access road, right? Or it appears to have multiple properties, so there's some cause for variance maybe versus the 10-foot standard. If you go back farther up towards, here's a driveway that, you know, clearly is substandard. Not substandard, whatever, it's about 10 feet. And they actually have these little triangles that are widening the ramp up to accommodate the pull-in. I don't know when that might have been granted or not. And then this one just next door, this one also is, oh, sorry, that one there. That's just, I think, two houses down. That one is most certainly wider than the 10 feet and did require, my guess would be a clearing of the original ramp up that was designed that you see here. There are both these driveways. So beyond the 10-foot permissive, by right, might suggest they do something different with the ramp as well.
Just have a clarification. The building inspector, I don't believe is here, but if you have a two-car garage, I believe you're allowed 20 feet. If you have a one-car garage, you're allowed 10 feet.
Yeah, the, the reading of that is sort of interesting. Let me just go to that again.
You guys might not see it, but Steve is raising his hand.
Oh, sorry.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to let you know, I spoke with the homeowner. You're discussing the width on the driveway, obviously. Correct?
Yes.
All right, she's going to change that to 10 foot, back to the change.
Ooh.
Awesome.
Wow, that was easy.
Yeah, I talked, I talked to her today and said that the, I never really noticed that it was 12 and a half feet until I looked at it again today, and then I called her and said, do you have an issue with going back to 10-foot wide up until when you make the change for the second car? And she said she had no problem with that.
I think that would make it more consistent with what is commonly done. I know there's a lot of properties, even if they have a two-car garage, they often have a fair amount of the modest driveway going up to it, and then the wider patch right in front of it, which is fairly similar to what they're proposing.
Yeah, her, her current driveway is eight and a half foot wide with the brick edge. So she's just going to make it to 10-foot wide up until that change of the 172 square feet. I believe it's 172 square feet of extra space up at the garage.
Do you see that? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say that'll reduce the percentage of lock coverage then, true?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's probably two feet, at least two and a half feet by 30 feet? Maybe? Somebody can do the math, but.
Yeah, I'm gonna figure out that. Yeah, oh, thank you for checking on that, Steve. When we had the Masonic Lodge come up, we had, when that being converted to a house, I believe they ended up putting in a 12-foot wide driveway, and we had a lot of discussion about that. The commentary from the fire marshal is they thought the 12-foot wide driveway was required by fire code. And we didn't see much evidence of that for a residential driveway. For a road, maybe, but so we, I remember hearing a few comments from people that they would have preferred something at least a little narrower than 12 feet. But I don't, I mean, 10 feet meets code for that. So if they want the bulk of their driveway 10 feet long, I don't have any objection to that. Anybody else?
Good idea.
I think that makes it pretty straightforward. We do, I did the math, though. If it's two and a half foot by, say, 30 foot, that's going to only reduce the lock coverage from just shy of 29 to about 28. So they'll still be over lock coverage.
And they're already over lock coverage. They were 20, over 20% already. They were at 29, 2, 29, 19.2 already, which means they were at 28%.
Yep.
28.7. So you're going to drop it down to 29.3, I believe.
Steve, can you share with me on the drawing, there's a reference to an existing fence. Is that actually a fence, or is that like a, I don't see anything on Google Maps. They installed?
It is, it is a fence that they were approved through and installed earlier in the year through the HBB.
Thank you very much.
And how far is it from the driveway? Is it called yet?
It's pretty close to the driveway, but that's, I mean, that's, I mean, there really is no bearing on that.
Well, I mean, if they're going to park the car in the driveway and want to open their car door, if there's a fence there, that causes a bit of a problem. But if they're going to not do that, then, you know, and I guess that's all on them. They, they can, they can put their fence where they want to put their fence.
Yeah, because basically, it would be the passenger that might be a little tight, not the driver.
Right. Yeah, the standard, so right now in code, you have 18-foot of width for a two-car garage. So this is 19 feet in width. Was there a reason why they had it sort of diagonally come in from the left as it approached the garage instead of just going straight?
No, I don't know. It was, that's the way it was. You know, I mean, if you look at it, there's a slight angle. As it approached the garage, it actually veers to, the left edge veers to the right slightly.
I see.
I mean, that's just existing right there, the way it is.
Yeah, like give them room to park the car. Okay, do we want to, sorry, just to interrupt, it's 6:33.
Okay, I think it makes sense to go ahead and open the meeting. And thank you for the presentation, Dave. I found that very helpful.
Sure.
I have sent the board on request to start the videos. You might be coming on.
Yes.
Now we have a spotlight on one video.
Oh, there he is.
We're getting closer.
Dave, you're bigger than the rest of us.
Bigger than life right now. It's a little creepy.
I'm trying.
Somebody else.
Well, maybe that's because you're sharing. I don't know.
I quit sharing.
No.
Okay.
All Dave, now it's all Dorothea.
Oh, no, wait, hold on.
You must have that automatic transfer for whoever is talking.
Need gallery view.
Yeah.
Okay.
This will create a disincentive for public speaking.
There we go. Is that better?
It's all you.
It's all me? No, you don't want all me. No, 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 no.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what it is? Everybody can go into their own view.
Yes.
Gallery view.
And change it to gallery. It's not a preset.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, so in the upper right corner, if you click on gallery view, you don't see the giant magnified person talking.
Yeah, that would be best.
Okay, all right, well, we're up to 6:30. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to open the regular meeting.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Does the board want me to do roll call?
We often have it for things like motions to open meetings for voting on an actual decision. I would say yes.
Okay.
Fair enough.
That's fair. I just want to make sure my part.
I'll vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that was unanimous approval to open the meeting. Does any? Does anyone have any conflicts of interest?
No. Loto, no.
Okay, none for myself either.
None for me.
Is the applicant present, by the way?
She is on according to chat. She may not be able to talk right yet.
I can release her. Ms. Cole, you should be able to be seen in her.
Okay, very good. So I'd like to just go ahead and get into this. I don't know if the applicant was present during our workshop here. But we had a little bit of a discussion about what some of the neighbors have for driveways. And we talked just a little bit of an overview of what you're doing. We heard from the building inspector. And he said that you're changing your driveway from the proposed 12 foot width to the 10 foot width. Which would make the bulk of the driveway comply with code. And then you're just going to have the wider area back at the end. Is that your understanding as well?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, so you're before us for a variance. And the, one of the reasons that was brought up going from 12 to 10 is we have approximately six criteria we have to. There's five regular criteria we have to look at when we consider an area variance. And what a variance is, is basically granting you an exemption from the code requirements. And there are five criteria we have to look at under state law. And you don't have to comply with all five of them. And then what we do is we consider the criteria and weigh that against the benefits to you. And we'll ultimately come up with a decision. One of the additional things is we're required by state law to grant the minimum requirements needed to give you the relief you need. So that's why going from 12 down to 10 for the regular driveway, I think that really. That helps quite a bit because that makes that portion of it not violate code. If you want to go wider, we could consider that, but that would be a discussion. So I think this would make this a much simpler discussion if you, since you are interested in amending your application, have the bulk of the driveway at 10 foot width.
That's fine.
Okay, so that said, if you would like, let's go ahead and start. You can. You can introduce your project a little bit. Then the board can ask you a few questions. We may ask the building inspector for a few comments on his observations. And then we usually get into discussing our five criteria that we have to consider for the variances. And that'll lead us to a decision. It'll be a public hearing, so we are accepting public comments. Should any person in the public want to speak. Prior to opening the hearing and getting into public comments, we usually like to start with an initial presentation by the applicant as to their proposal. And then a few questions by the board. So that's how I would expect to go tonight. So introduce your product, project, questions from the board, any public comments. And then the board will ask any remaining questions and deliberate on the five criteria. So just wanted to give you an overview of where we're going tonight. And I believe two variances are requested. Is that correct, Steve? That was your finding?
Yes.
Okay, one for the width and one for the area.
Correct.
Okay, so that said, Lynn, please go ahead. Let you introduce your project and explain how, what you're doing and how this is going to be a good improvement for you.
Sure. So, you know, I currently live in a home that I bought about a year, a little over a year and a, about a year and a half ago, that was in pretty poor repair. And so one of the projects that needs to be completed is a replacement of the driveway. The driveway is toast. It's all broken up pavement and then it has very narrow curbs along each side. So it's actually really hard to even get a car in it. So we want to replace the driveway. And as long as we're doing that, the hope is to have two spots for two cars to pa- park back by the garage. Which would allow when there's two people at home for one person to get out of the driveway without having to have the other person back into the busy road. Wait while the other person backs out and, you know, create more traffic disturbance. So that's the main reason for having the two parking spots back near the garage. And then the reality is just, you know, because of where the garage was located on the property. It's a long, narrow driveway. And so, you know, short of knocking down the garage and building a new garage, which is cost prohibitive. The, you know, there's not really a way to make the driveway shorter. So I guess I'm looking to, you know, replace the driveway, which I believe will overall be a visual improvement of the property, that it will look nicer. And to replace it with something that will allow for more safety.
Thank you. And thank you for writing your little letter of intent that explained this. One of the things we're particularly interested in is unique circumstances about your property. And that backs up to a major road like that is something that is. Really makes sense for us to consider. So thank you for mentioning that. And I believe there's also no on-street parking on that road either. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So. We have a hard time when, with variances for people that want things that are lacking unique circumstances. So by demonstrating some different things that differentiate your house, that's really helpful for us to think about. So thank you for, for doing that. The information we had from the building inspector was your current driveway is about eight and a half feet wide. We saw that any of your neighbors have varying widths of driveways. It looks like you have the narrowest one of anyone around you. So there are certainly wider ones and houses adjacent to you. And it certainly sounds to me that eight and a half feet is just too narrow to be practical. So I completely agree with that. So does anyone have any questions for the applicant to get started here?
I just had a fairly simple question with regards to the design. I saw that you were keeping the diagonal shape on the. On the map, what would be the left side going into the. First garage door. And then you sort of straighten it out with the right side. Was there any reason not to just have that go straight back?
So the way it goes is it really goes straight back. Like if you were to drive from the street, straight back into the garage. That is a straight shot. But the property ends right at the line of the garage. And so you really can't park a car to the left of there. I don't know. We never actually parked a car there. So it's funny that, that was, that showed on the aerial view. But the only way to really have a second car that's on our property is to park it to the right of the garage. And so that's why the, you know, that's why the bump out goes that direction is really just to maintain it on our property.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was more referencing the very slight diagonal of the driveway design, sort of coming in just a touch on the left side. Towards where the opening of the existing garage is rather than having it be parallel with the other side.
What are you saying, Lynn? Lynn, what are you saying is right now the driveway curves to the right on the left-hand side a little bit. So what he's asking basically is why you wouldn't just straighten that out along with the other change.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we could straighten it out. I don't think that's a, a big deal. I don't actually even recall that aspect being on the, you know, like. It didn't stand out to me on the plan. So I apologize.
Okay. Yeah, I just was wondering if there's a specific reason or not. And sorry to clarify again, is the fence already in or not in?
Yeah, the fence is already in. And there's, and there, I know you had that question before. There's plenty of room between the driveway and the fence. So we currently park like next to the fence and even extending it by 18 inches will still leave plenty of room next to the fence to get in and out of the car.
Okay.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions?
What's the dimension, the depth? So in the, on the, on the drawing, there's the new section on the right. So it's 19 feet wide. There's a six, a six foot extension past the building. But then going back towards the street before it tapers back in, there's no length on that. So how long is that going to be?
You should, John, you should have got dimensions. I, I have a dimension that showed the, the little pie shaped part of it. And then I squared off the other part of it to show exactly what we'd be adding, 172.25 square feet. I think Dorothea sent that one out today.
I, I'm just looking what's in the meeting packet.
Is someone able to share that drawing on the screen?
I would be able to once I get there.
Is it on the drawing? Maybe I'm missing it. I just, I don't see it.
There, there was a drawing, but I think it missed the first version of our meeting packet. And I think Dorothea added it.
Yeah, so I don't see it on the webmail for what was sent. And they just see.
Dorothea, are you able to share a drawing? I think I emailed you this morning. You're muted, Dorothea.
Yes, I'm getting it right now. Hold on.
If you could, Lynn, while that's getting pulled up, when you think about the diagonal of, nevermind, it's coming up now.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm looking at. I, I just, there's no.
There's two sets of these drawings, so it's very confusing.
That's new. That's new right there. Yes, slide up. If you could. It's 19 feet.
19, okay. Okay.
How, Lynn, how far back from the back of your house? Is the front of the garage?
Uh, it's quite a distance. I would estimate like 30 or more feet.
Okay, so then that diagonal at the corner that would be closest to your house, the one that's indicated at 20 feet.
Yeah.
Is at least 10 feet beyond your back porch.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We have a whole patio in there between, between where the back porch is and where that diagonal starts cutting up, you know, cutting over.
Yep.
It looks like it's 60 feet from the back of the house there, too.
Okay. Well. And then with regards to the width of the driveway, you'd mentioned going from 12 and a half to 10 feet. And then looking at the, the existing fence that's already been installed. Would you anticipate then giving up the two and a half feet on the, what would be the west side?
Um. I would anticipate centering it. So some of, some of the, you know, because it's basically cutting it down, yeah, by two and a half feet. So taking a, you know, a foot off of each side.
And then you would do.
Some of that, like, I don't, I think the eight and a half feet doesn't count the. The curbs that are next to the driveway and those are four, I think those are four to six inches wide. And so that right there, even just filling in where those curbs are already makes it, you know, so some of it will just be taken up by that.
Are you getting rid of the curb?
Yes.
Okay, so you won't be replacing pavement with also a curb?
No, I don't, we don't, I would prefer not to have a curb.
So then would you potentially have a foot of grass on the other side of the fencing?
Yes, I mean, we already do. So everything. Everything that isn't, you know, that isn't covered by driveway will be covered by grass.
Right. So then, as you think about the fence on the east side. Until it starts to widen out, you may have a strip of grass. But then you would essentially fill it all in with pavement closer to the fence? Or are you going to give a gap of some grassing on the pavement side?
No, there would be grass between the driveway and the fence.
Okay.
Because there already is a fair, you know, there's already like, I don't know, probably three feet of grass. And so we'll just, you know, we'll cut back a little bit from that, but there'll be, still be a strip of grass.
Okay. And, and therein lies kind of my next comment. The 19 foot width is wider than a two car garage width. But in looking at standard parking lots, parking space is nine feet. So, you know, you figure two parking spaces, you're at 18 feet. This is about a foot wider than that. And for a living, you know, for living purposes, I'd rather have a little more space than just what a standard parking spot provides. So I don't see any problem personally with the 19 feet of width or the little bit extra, that 20 feet area. Because given the size of vehicles today, making sure you can back out without hitting fences is pretty important. So a little bit extra turning radius is probably useful here, especially to get onto a 10 foot versus a 12 and a half foot driveway.
Yes.
They might even be able to turn around back there in that width. If they had a small car.
Yeah.
They had a smaller.
Okay, so when I'm looking at this, I'm just looking at an overhead image, it looks like the strip of grass currently from the driveway to the property line. It looks like it's something like three and a half feet or something like that. So with a slightly wider driveway, it looks like you'll still have that, a strip of grass there. And then the rest of the yard is lawn. Steve, did you have any concerns about drainage in this area?
No, not at all. I mean, she's only widening an existing space. You know, I mean, you're not going to change the drainage to any neighbors from that. Just kind of a side note, it just, the only difference is in taking away the two and a half feet, you know, in the length. Because basically I measured the driveway out to be nine foot, eight inches with the bricks on both sides. So I didn't really count much as far as, you know, that, but you're going to increase from 28.7%, that's current now, to 30.48. As far as lot coverage.
So 20, what was that number again, Steve?
It's, it currently sits at 28.7% coverage and it will increase to 30.48% coverage.
Okay. I don't really personally see much of a workaround, honestly. It feels like this is the minimum amount available.
It's a huge safety issue. Trying to back out on the state street is, is very dangerous.
Especially two cars, like back one out just to back the next one out.
Right, so you have to have somebody go out and sit in the road to wait for the other person to come out. And then you're taking a chance on two people getting hit.
On drainage, Steve, just a quick question.
Yeah.
With regards to the larger area of coverage towards the garage itself. As far as where the apex of the driveway is, would you tend to have the, the apex be in the middle through the driveway? And as it gets to the back there, stay towards the middle? Or would it stay towards the left where more of the drainage runoff goes towards their property versus the neighbors?
Yeah, I would, I would say that could be a stipulation that you create the slight angle of draining, making sure it drains to the right as you look back at the garage.
And that would definitely be the plan because the property next to me, to the, you know, to the left on this driveway is higher. Like their driveway will be, I don't know, probably six to eight inches, you know, higher once they're leveled. And so the drainage already goes kind of down the driveway and in towards our backyard.
Drainage is the problem. So, so it, so the general rule of drainage is you're supposed to keep it on your own property.
Yes, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's really what we're looking at. So I'm looking at what's next, the property next to you here. And next to your driveway, first of all, there is a big driveway of theirs, which you would say is higher. And then they have a garage. I doubt their garage has a basement in there. And so it, it, if, if it's higher anyway, that's kind of moot. So I, I like that idea that you pitch the water to stay in your yard. That sounds like an excellent idea. And Steve said that he didn't have any concerns about that. It doesn't sound like the driveway itself is being made substantially wider. So I, 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 I think that's, that doesn't look like that's gonna introduce any problems.
And I would suggest that only needs to occur where it starts to widen. On the standard driveway of ten feet, probably a middle pitch is perfectly fine until it starts to widen. And then a minimum keep the pitching, you know, roughly constant through that straight line. Where, you know, three quarters of it goes to your property versus a standard five-foot width goes to the, to the west.
Yeah, personally, I'd be content to let the building inspector and the applicant work that out when they get the building permit or whatever permit they need and work out whoever needs to pitch to accommodate drainage.
Yeah, and I will, I'll make sure I try, if she's still using the same gentleman for a driveway, I'll make sure I connect with him and, and ensure that the driveway is pitched to the right, like I said, as you're looking at the garage.
Yeah.
At least in the line part, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have any further questions or comments, Justin.
Thank you. Is anyone else?
Justin?
Susan.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that I think this project is an aesthetic plus. It actually brings this new proposed driveway kind of it's more consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. And I think there are compelling safety reasons, you know. So I, I think this is, is a good, worthy project as, as it's been submitted to us.
Thank you.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and open the public hearing and see if there are any public comments. So I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing for both variance applications at this time.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Katura? I'm sorry, member Katura, I didn't hear that.
I can hear her.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Marshall?
Aye.
Chairman Belistrer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so the protocols for this in Zoom are a little tricky, but if there's anyone that would like to speak, if you can raise your hand, or you can leave a comment in the chat to request the speak.
You have one attendee, and I'm not seeing any hand raising at this time.
Okay, and Dorothea, did you receive any comments from anyone in the public?
No, I did not.
Okay, no emails on us. All right, well, then I'll go ahead and make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, member Marshall?
Aye.
Member Katura?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chairperson Belistrer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I think it makes sense to, let's just start the discussion, we might just have the same findings for both of these. But if we start with the width end of this, because the width kind of defines the area. So, Dorothea, if you can open the draft resolution on the driveway width and share that, we can just kind of scroll through that and get to the criteria that we have to look at. All right, let's go ahead and start with A. Can scroll up a little bit, Dorothea. And we'll ask our attorney, Mindy. Did you have any concerns about speaker being type two or county planning or LWRP here?
None.
Okay. All right, so let's go ahead and for the first one, who would like to talk about this?
So, a- as I mentioned, I think this project will not create an undesirable change in the character of the, of the neighborhood. In fact, I think it will kind of adds to the, adds to the look of that stretch of State Street. It's an upgrade.
Yeah, so I think we had heard, well, the testimony we had heard is it's in pretty bad disrepair at this point. So doing the work and putting in something uniform and new would be the improvement in its appearance. We also noted that nothing they're proposing is atypical in this area. Other people have parking areas in their rear in nearby properties. And the width they're proposing is not atypical for other properties. Other, if they're proposing the ten-foot driveway, other people in that area have ones of various sizes that are at least ten feet. So this seems to me at least, to be consistent with what the adjacent properties are doing.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
All right, let's go on to the next one then. Seems pretty clear, there is no other option for this. This cannot be achieved by another method. There's nowhere else to put a parking area other than where they proposed, and it looks like that's the least intrusive of any place they could put it.
Agreed.
Mm-hmm.
And there's no on-street parking on State Street?
Yes, there's no on-street parking. I think that is a valuable thing to note. It's not here. At least noted at the end here. For the next one, I would just suggest stating it is substantial in that they're proposing twenty feet where a ten-foot is provided. But it helps solve a significant safety issue due to the proximity of the main road.
And it, and it's commensurate with neighboring properties, with neighborhood properties.
Okay, so we're basically saying it is substantial, but reasonable and effectively. So that's fine. Let's go on to D. And again, we don't have to comply with all these five criterias. We just have, we have to consider them. So normally with D, we just copy the answer from A. I think that would be appropriate.
Agreed.
Okay, the next one, E. The usual thing we would state is, yes, the need for this is self-created, but this alone does not conclude writing an area variance. Any other comments? And on F, as to whether it's minimal necessary to provide relief. I believe we heard commentary from Dave about that earlier that this is reasonable to fit two cars in the parking area in front of the garage where the cars can still open their doors and leave possibly some room to turn a car around. And I would also say if it was slightly smaller, I don't think it would significantly alter the impacts of this. Any other comments on that?
Not for F.
No.
G, anyone want to take a stab at that?
Simply saying the primary physical characteristic is the single-car garage is located in the far back of the property. That doesn't necessarily, this is the, the width of the driveway, right?
Correct.
The lot coverage.
Lot coverage is the next one.
Yeah, okay, so then from the physical characteristic, I really don't think there is much other than there's no on-street parking, but that's not, maybe that's more a location of the property than characteristics of the property.
Well, so there's no on-street parking. And it's also a busy road. And as the building inspector stated, having backing up onto a busy road to swap cars is a significant safety concern. Um, and, and that I think really differentiates us from a lot of other properties as well is the, the main road and no on-street parking. So I think that's important to put that in here. Does anyone else have anything to add?
Only in that additional, an even wider driveway to allow for a turnaround internal to the property would further exacerbate the lot coverage problem. Or, right, because you could potentially have an even wider driveway to allow for them to turn around within it, rather than having a single car back out onto the road, right? And I don't think that's what we want.
They still have room for landscaping and planting some shrubs and trees and stuff like that in there.
Yeah. No, I.
And that, that's really why we have these regulations, and so there's still room left for landscaping. And we don't have everything painted.
Yep.
That said, some properties do have nearly everything painted.
I'm all set with G.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to add for G or H?
H, the only comment I'd add is the, just maybe mention the drainage, just briefly.
Okay, so we'll state that the parking area will be drained into the applicant's yard, pitched towards the applicant's yard, and the neighboring yard is higher than the applicant's yard. And again, the neighboring yard we're speaking of is sixty-four State Street.
I wouldn't even require, I, I would leave it up to Steve. He just mentioned that, you know, build an inspector to work with applicant with regards to drainage concerns, something like that. I, I don't want to force them to have all of it drained towards their house. If they can do a fifty-fifty on the long ten-foot swath, that's fine. If Steve's fine with that.
Well, I would mention the parking area. I didn't mention the, the rest of the driveway.
Oh, very good. Okay.
The rest of the driveway is what it is, and they're not making it much different.
Agreed.
Um, I also, I don't really see the need for any conditions of approval. Steve does need to give a driveway permit, and he's heard the concerns here about just checking to make sure it's reasonably pitched. So I'm confident that will be accommodated. Mindy, do you have any thoughts as to whether we should put any conditions of approval on here?
No, I don't think it requires any.
Sometimes we put a time limit on this that'll expire if we don't get permits within a year.
I'm fine letting it hang out there.
Yeah.
It's an improvement, so let them do it if they, you know, if they don't get to it for a year, fine.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking the same thing. It seems like this is reasonably required, and whether to do it now or later, I'm not very concerned about it.
Yeah.
We'll make a motion to approve the variance for the driveway width as permitted by the applicant to have a five-foot wide primary driveway.
Second.
Also plus the parking area.
Yeah. Thanks, Susan. Add your second.
Yep.
Okay, Dorothea, you want to call a vote?
You're muted, dear.
Sorry, member Katura?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Marshall?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chairperson Belistrer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so that one's out of the way. Can we go over the next one? See if you can share that for, I think this is the driveway area. Um, my personal opinions is I think we can copy our comments from the last one to most of these.
Agreed.
So let's say for A, let's just copy that from before. B, we can copy that from before.
No. C, I wouldn't.
C, I would change, and I would say this time, last time we said it was substantial, but this is different because we're only going from, um, we're only going to thirty percent, right?
Yeah, so.
So I guess the area change is at least not substantial relative to existing, is what I would say.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
And D, I would say we copy from the last one. And I guess I would, I would say the. A. I think but the minimum, I guess everything I am fine with copying our answers from the last one. Any other thoughts?
Sounds good.
All right, with that said, then I will make a motion to approve this area variance as amended by the applicant tonight. For the drive, for the ten-foot wide driveway plus the parking area. So I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Call vote. Member Kitchura?
Hi.
Member Loda?
Hi.
Member Marshall?
Hi.
Member Shannon?
Hi.
Chairperson Bluester?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Good, for the applicant, you are all set from us. Thank you very much, we have a, we usually have fairly long discussions, this was actually fairly brief for us. But we tried to be pretty thorough with these and look at them and explain why it makes sense. So you're all set and all vested. For Steve to grant your final permits.
Okay, thank you for your assistance.
Thank you. All right. Let's go to minutes next.
Which ones?
We had June. June twenty-first.
Wasn't there an application in June? Because I didn't see any resolutions embedded in the minutes.
I didn't. I'm not aware of any, but. That would be a good question.
There's a note that the resolution was me was missing maybe from the prior minutes. That's how I read it. Or I guess it could be. From this that.
Let me see, I may have, I may be able to get, pull up the meeting packet.
Just looked at the agenda, the only thing was tend to leave the the mayor plumber was supposed to present about the pollinator garden, but she wasn't, we weren't ready for that. So it doesn't look like you had an application.
Thanks.
We had a longer period with no applications. Okay, does anyone have any revisions to the June twenty-first minutes?
And none here.
None.
Okay, I'll make a motion then to approve them as drafted.
Second.
Hey, roll call, trust, member Shannon?
Hi.
Member Kitchura?
Hi.
Member Loda?
Hi.
Member Marshall?
Hi.
Chairperson Bluester?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay. So the next ones for September first. This was a very short set of minutes. Anyone have any revisions to these?
None from me.
Good with me.
Work for you, Mindy?
Looks good.
Okay. All right, now I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from.
Second.
Hey, roll call, member Shannon?
Hi.
Member Loda?
Hi.
Member Marshall?
Hi.
Member Kitchura?
Hi.
Chairperson Bluester? Motion passes.
Okay. We indicated our workshop that everyone was accepting of the meeting schedule as proposed. The one question I have for you, Dork, is that January nineteenth meeting still at virtual?
Uh, that's a good question, right now the law is through January sixth, we haven't received any indication which way that's going. I think a lot of that depends on the COVID numbers and they don't seem to be tempering too far down, so. That's a good question because I need the state to make that determination, so as soon as we know, I will pass that on, I did have that conversation with Mayor Flummer today. She's going to reach out to a couple legislators and see if they have any idea what is the. What's what they're going to do, it's it's all a guess for us.
Well, the I guess my main question is what was the actual cutoff date as it stands now?
January sixth is the cutoff date.
Okay, so for now that would be in person unless something changes.
Okay.
Today, moving it forward a day or two, that wouldn't make any difference, that was my main question.
No.
Very well then. So we'll leave that as drafted. If anyone has any wants to bitter that further at all and discuss the next meeting, making a change, that's fine with me, but I'm okay with Dorkia posting this for now. Right, and then the next section would be discussing some of these code changes. And Mindy, you indicated that you didn't think your attendance would is appropriate for this. So if you want to bow out, you're welcome to do that.
Yeah, okay, I just had sent around an email because advising the PCBA on issues related to potential code changes is not within the scope of services that. The village has asked me to do and. So if something specific comes up, you know, at a later time, perhaps we could talk about it, but at this point. I'll excuse myself.
Mindy, one quick question. Can we have a conversation on Wednesday? Let me know when it would be. Convenient for you.
Sure.
Great.
I'll give you a call later.
Thanks.
Okay, not everybody.
Night, Mindy.
All right. I'm not really sure where to start with this. I know with temporary use permits, that was something we've long had lots of issues, we've discussed that back and forth a few times. I think the real question is what did the trustees want to do to address those?
Your liaison trustee like this here, would you like him to join your conversation or?
Sure, I'd be happy to hear what he has to say.
Just like if you're able to speak now.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Hi, so the the question was about the the temporary use permits or the the especially use permits was the the topic of discussion.
So started off talking about temporary use permits, that's something that's been a problem for quite a while. And and I think that's probably, at least on my list, that's probably the top thing to address. And clarifying what qualifies for one and fixing some of the errors with that. And allowing fixing the things like outdoor assembly and feeding being required to be within twenty feet of a building. Those are some things that we've struggled with in the past, so. I don't know if. If you have any comments towards any any things or what you think the trustees might be interested in doing for addressing them.
Yeah, just trying to. Recall some of our discussions and I I can't speak for the whole board on this matter, but personally I have stated that. So the the trustees adopted code for short-term retail uses. And I think that this has has caused some conflict and and. Confusion with the the uses of the the temporary use permits. And I really do think that needs to be cleared up. Personally, I think a lot of those can be done by the. The planning board, but again, I can't speak for everybody, but I agree that's an area that we need to resolve.
Well, I mean, one of the problems with the one you have now is I think it's just plain illegal because. For. If something violates the zoning code, right now you have it, oh, the trustees can hear that on a temporary basis, can hear that, but state law says zoning of a board of appeals has to hear that as a use variance. So that short-term retail code for uses that violate the zoning code, I think is just really. Not good the way it is. If someone wants to create it for some special circumstance instead of for anything that violates the zoning code, I guess I would feel better about that, but. I've never really liked this situation of having codes as if you do this, you have to comply with this, if you have something else that violates code, well, just ask us, maybe we'll allow it. I don't think that's good code personally. I think you should just state what things are you want to allow, give some reasonable definitions for it and reasonable requirements for it and that's that's fine. I also think we've only had about three things come up for various temporary permits, we have like special events. For whatever they happen to be. Things like farmers market, things like car shows, things like that, and those are generally things that are of public interest. We have like special sales and special commercial activities sometimes come up. Whether someone wants to have a sidewalk sale in front of their business or Buffalo Bills wanted to do a shuttle service. We had things like that. We've had. I guess the the Christmas tree sale would be another example of that. And then we have various nonprofit fundraisers that go on like Pittsburgh Little League selling chicken barbecue dinners. So I I think all those types of things could be reasonably characterized as part of definitions and a way to regulate them and bring up fulfill permits for those type of activities, I think that. To me, that seems reasonable.
Justin, would you be able to to clarify, I don't know, the audio wasn't great for a second, but as as far as things like the. The Christmas tree event and the. The the benefit barbecue type of thing, do you think those could be done administratively? If we set out the parameters by the the code enforcement officer, for example, or were you still thinking that those would go to the the planning board in our vision?
I think it makes no sense for anybody to hear a nonprofit fundraiser that goes on for one day. I don't think that's a good use of anybody's time nor an application fee, at least personally. Anyone else think about, have any thoughts about that?
Agreed.
I agree with that.
Amen. Agreed.
So I personally think of maybe if the attendance is particularly big, expected attendance, I'm thinking something like the car show. Maybe it's makes sense for someone to look at, I don't know. Things that go on for weeks, I I do think it makes sense for somebody to look at, I'm not sure what that threshold should be. But I don't think that you can do a whole lot of harm in a one to three-day event. It'll be gone and people will move on and. There you go.
One of the, go ahead, Steve, that's how you can come up.
Yeah, what I was gonna say, we've we've been talking about the fact like a one-day event. Or or an event that's a recurring event, a yearly event that's unchanged could be done administratively. Just for ease of, you know, board time and, I mean, something that that recurs year after year after year and never changes as long as there's no complaints. I think could be easily handled administratively and save you guys from having to deal with it. And a one-day event could be handled administratively within the office.
You know, a couple of things like the regattas down on the canal or paddle and pour, you know, those are big enough events possibly, or at least paddle and pour is where you should at least have one. Approval process for the temporary use, but you know, beyond that, as long as things are constant and Steve, you know, could probably be the judge of that. They don't need reapproval, I I think that'd be very useful.
Actually, the paddle and pour and the regattas, they just get a non-municipal from the village board, they don't even go through any other approvals outside of that, so.
So thanks, Dorkia, let's sort of think of that. That's very good because I didn't know that, but let's think of it, what if there's an agency outside of municipal use? That wants to be able to create an event like that within the community of commercial, you know, that district. It'd be nice to be able to create that opportunity if it gets approved once to to persist.
Okay, so it sounds like the general opinion is no one is very concerned about looking at one-day events, which I would agree with, unless it happened to have attendance over some threshold. Whatever that is, it'd be pretty large, five hundred people, a thousand people, something like that. That can be debated, but all these little things, it sounds like you don't need to be concerned about. I always feel bad about these nonprofits having to come in and talk to somebody for like a one-day sale or a two-day sale to have outdoors, I don't think. I think that's totally un. Not a good use of anyone's time to have a lengthy process for things like that.
I'm just kind of to clarify, Justin, with your list, and then I have a list also of possible changes. We went, we sat down, the mayor and I and Susan and sat down and kind of went through and prioritized the things on your list a little bit because. I mean, there's a lot of stuff here to try and and chew off at one time. So I and I think that would be good for, you know, whoever's chosen as far as the the members, because we talked about two members from each board. Being involved in the in the kind of a committee to look at the code changes. I don't know how your group feels about that, but to simplify the process or to, you know. We sat down, prioritized some of the items like years, the temporary use permit was one of the ones that we checked off as being a major. Issue that we would like to see cleared up. It's something that we could, you know, I don't know how you want to deal with this, like this could turn into a really long discussion on on a number of items. Or if, you know, we could pare down the list here and prioritize. And then, like I said, once committees are formed, you can go through and decide actually how to. Address those issues and then go back to the boards with those findings. I've been doing some other research in regards to town, the thing like lock coverage. I took two different neighborhoods and and took the average on the neighborhood of the actual physical lock coverage. Like you take Rand, Maple, Locust and South Street, that that quadrant right there, the average coverage. The average coverage in that neighborhood is already over 29%. All right, just as it sits, I took Courtney Circle and took 10 houses in Courtney Circle and did the same thing there. They are sitting at 28.3% average. So that's one of those items that if we looked at just changing a threshold, I mean, it's a pretty simple item for like, say, the MDRs and the L. LDR or LOR districts to just increase that lot coverage to some average. You know, like say the MDRs, because they're already at basically 30%, maybe put in the MDRs because they're all very congested neighborhoods. Maybe bump that to 35% because they're already all at 30 or, you know, 29.8, I think I came up with for that neighborhood. And maybe bump up the LORs to 30% coverage because they are basically already above on average. You know, those are some of the things that that I think if we take your, you know, the four pages down, pare it down, because you don't want to bite off. I mean, it's, I don't really have a lot of saying it, but I don't think you want to bite off a giant code change. I think what you want to do is make code adjustments. I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
Of the things that we could change, it's been a lot of time on. I personally haven't found too much issue with lot coverage, though I appreciate your insight on the averages being above 25. I do find that lot coverage allows us to consider things and grant a variance where it's applicable. It would be hard and maybe one of these ideas, I've talked to some folks about it, having a neighborhood specific code, right?
You could do it by, you could do it by zoning district. You could do it in in the MDR. I mean, right now, basically, Dave, you're forcing 90 to 95% of people to get a variance to put a shed up. You know what I mean? And if that sheds it, within the limits of what you're allowing for an accessory structure, should a resident actually have to come in to get a variance to put a shed up? I don't, I don't see that as being prudent or or reasonable to a resident. When the when the average neighborhood coverage is well over the threshold that already exists.
So respect that. All I would say is it's not always going to be a shed. So if one wanted to create some stipulations that extended the building expector, the ability to extend beyond the 25%. Maybe one of those would be the installation of a shed where none exists. Yeah, something to that effect. To avoid some of those standard things that you're thinking about. And and I tend to like, just talking about code for a second, I tend to like it by neighborhood, maybe then by zoning district. So think, for example, single family, you know, zones or or, you know, residential zones. What's going on right now with regards to Courtney Circle and improvements for homes, for example, where when the homes were put in, you had. Plastic or vinyl windows versus wood windows. And the person with wood windows wants to put in vinyl windows, but they can't because they're held to the standard of it needing to be wood, because that's what was there already. But when the buildings all went in, it was either or. So I think that might be embedded in there already, a little bit of that flexibility, specific to that area. But that's where I'm sort of speaking to your lot coverage. Maybe there's the ability to consider neighborhoods versus just the entire zoning district. I think, though, that our focus, you know, as far as the code should be on things like the temporary use on the special use permits. You know, getting with especially use permits, for example, it'd be great, Justin, you had in this list a couple of ideas of of breaking out specific things, right? And having a specific code applied to, for example, food trucks, rather than needing to recreate the wheel or having different. Or one set of rules apply, one set of code apply to every special use permit.
Yeah, but then there's a couple of other things, like there's too many things, in my opinion, that need special use permits right now. Then getting rid of some of those, but that might lead to a large discussion among the trustees. I'm not sure. So as far as prioritizing things, in my opinion is, well, if we have a list and the trustees want to take a chunk at fixing things and do a round of. The most important and and a handful of ones that are easy, that makes sense to me, and then another round another time. I think that's kind of the trustees' decision as to how many they want to throw together. And, you know, certainly when it comes up before them. If the list they choose to start working on is omitting something that we think really should be addressed, then we can forward those comments along.
Well, Steve already got, Steve, what were the top three? You you talked to the mayor. What would she say were the top three?
Yeah, we had, we had the temporary use permit.
Yeah.
We had the accessory review permitted accessory use list.
Okay.
And we had add regulations for food trucks.
Oh, okay.
Simple one is to change the the setbacks and yard definitions that Justin put in on page two.
I don't know if coming up the definitions will be easy, but I think wanting to change that is. Straightforward.
Yeah. And you have in there, which we put in, re review use tables, policy changes, changes or suggests to reduce number of special use permit. That's a top one. Update lighting code as it is obsolete was another one we want to take a look at. Another one, just real simple or not simple, but another one that we said, maybe the parallel signs. Your perpendicular signs. Because there's a lot of, you know, kind of the way Shane place and and our structure is it leans, some of the business owner leans to having a perpendicular sign versus a. A sign that's attached to the building. Review the list of residential changes to trigger site plan review. I would personally, and this is, this is up to everybody, I would like to see the under 400 square feet, not have to do a site plan review. Because basically, right now, anything that's added to a site triggers a site plan review. I don't care what you do. If you want to put a shed on a site, a legal sized shed, you technically have to come to this a site plan review.
I'm not sure that's true, but there are some things exempted from it.
But only only additions to residential structure, not a separate, I don't believe in a separate, separate accessory structure is exempt.
Well, I I thought that one story things under under 400 square feet, but.
That's triggered, our code says that is a site, a minor site plan review, I believe, and majors over 400 square feet. And I will tell you this, I've been on a planning board and involved in three different municipalities, who've never did a site plan for a shed.
Yeah, I have no interest in one for a shed.
The 12 foot height restriction on accessory structure can be fixed by a definition change. Or just purely adding a line to exempt residential garage from that code. Because you you literally can't build any garage over 10 foot wide, under 12 foot unless you're going to have a three or four 12 roof. Which does not match the character of any of the homes or or neighborhoods in this village.
And I'm reading minor site plan right now, and Steve, I think your interpretation is right. It's required anytime you develop or demolish a building not exceeding 400 square feet is considered minor site plan review.
Right.
Right, if you want to put a shed, technically, they have to go over site plan and it's, you know. I don't think that's a good use of your time or or residence money.
Yeah, I would agree. I'm looking under the exemption list, and that's 21034.1. And it says, it says what is exempt is altering a single family dwelling under 400 square feet. But again, he says that's dwelling and it doesn't specifically say shed.
Yeah, okay.
I think a shed or a garage under 400 square feet would fall well within that exemption.
So the way I'm sort of thinking on this, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong after your discussions with the mayor. But for our board to essentially select two participants to be a part of these discussions and thinking about what direction might. All of these things want to go, how much they might need to expand versus, you know, define, depending on these different issues. To John's question, there might be five or six different things that are appropriate, maybe one of them is rather large or maybe two, like temporary use permits and special use permits. And the rest are rather minor. And then within these, this committee of six to seven people. Come up with the ideas that we would like to individually bring back to our boards collectively, have a public discussion in a format like this. Here's where we are, here's the things that apply to us, here's the changes. Focus on any changes that might be appropriate, and then those two people kind of bring it back to that committee. And say, this is where the planning board kind of comes down on these things. Which may or may not be consistent with what that committee is going to recommend to the to the board itself. Is that how you see it?
Correct. There's going to be some some back and forth, yes, but, you know, to simplify it and keep it a little smaller, because otherwise, you know. You get too large a group or too many cooks in the kitchen, it's just going to create a problem, you know what I mean? Or or just create, I think, more work than we need to do. So I think that Justin put out a great list. I don't know if you, I will make sure I disseminate my list. Most of my list are are items that just got missed in the transition, things that are labeled still to the old code. You know, references to places that don't exist anymore. That's the majority of my list, but I will make sure to disseminate that to everybody so you at least have a a look at it tomorrow.
So this will be in part some corrections and observations that you have, part actual code changes, like adding a whole food truck. Special use permit section, for example.
Correct.
And. The other benefit, just I see to the two person versus the full board is you get to take it offline and spend as much time as you want on it, not in a public session. Which has some benefits. And the only thing I would say is. In creating this, is it possible, Justin, for us to have a. Maybe not open a public hearing, but at least somehow express to the public that input, you know, is helpful or useful? I mean, is that something we even want to do, or do you want to do that after the fact? Like, I don't know. Or not at all, because it's really just.
A public hearing is required to change laws.
True, but that's that's at the village board level. I'm asking at the planning board level or the zoning board level. Do we need to do it at all?
We need to have the meetings open to the public. I think Mindy commented on this once, is that we're in a, we're usually hearing applications and. We're not soliciting public comments for, you know, arbitrary matters. We have people come before us and then based on what's before us, we receive comments on it. But certainly if it's an agenda item and someone wants to comment on it, we've always been willing to do comments. But I think the trustees are usually the ones that are meant to talk to the public about, you know, the day to day matters that come up.
All right, that's kind of the way I was thinking it. I just wanted to be certain. And so then, Steve, did you get a gauge as to how long this process, when they'd like to button it up and and put something through?
Well, do you want my, I will say this, I would wish that would have happened yesterday. But we are, we are a government entity. And things take time because there's a lot of other matters going on, but I would, I would hope. And expect that by somewhere around, you know, first of the year or early next year, that we could have, you know, the changes made. So coming into the spring season, these things would benefit the community.
So you might hope that the village board votes on new code January.
January, February, yes. Yeah, so somewhere somewhere by March, you know, April, at the latest, we could implement the changes. Like I said, coming into the new season, it would, it would benefit everybody.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so the construction season roughly begins in March.
You've got some input here.
I got some input here. Passing laws takes time. I'm going to guess that going through this code is going to take few meetings. We're in November. So I just want to throw a reality check to the board. You're looking at December, you're going into holiday, and then you're going to hit January. It takes 30 days to set a public hearing for a local law. And then I have to file it with the state. By the time I get back, it's sometimes two to three weeks if things are good and it's been running very slow. So I'm going to say that's very aggressive timeframe, Steve. I don't see it happening that fast. I think, I think the mayor would say it's more important to get this right. And take the proper time to make sure this round, we don't have to go back and fix this code section again, or at least not until something major happens. So I would suggest that, you know, this takes to March, April, it takes the time it takes. And really anticipate, it takes 30 to 45 days tops to get a local law completely filed with the state and passed with the board.
Yeah, that's why I said, I thought, I thought if we could have it by some April, you know, or the end of April, that I think that would serve, you know, the purpose. But, you know, it all depends on on the discussions that are going to take place with the committee. And at this point, we have to actually form the committee. So it's, that's up to you and your board, Justin, as to who the two people would be that you want to be involved. And the same thing has to be done by the HPP.
Okay.
So who gets the short straw? That's what I want to know.
I I'd like to be on the committee, because I kind of get into all these details. And does some, is there someone else that would like? Be anonymous.
I'll do it if nobody else wants to.
Crickets.
Everybody else went like this, Dave.
There we go. Yeah, right. There we go. I don't mind. It's kind of fun. All I would say, though, is if if our next step is to take this list of things, Justin, that you've created. And bring it to committee and express the things that we as a board have found some concern with. I would just ask that the three non participating members just continue to send us information, anything that comes across your mind. That we can bring forward to the committee, because it sounds like at the end, we're going to end up. Not addressing some things that we really wish maybe we could address, you know, safe parking, for example. I don't know if they want parking code to be embedded in this practical code improvement. But it's still something that maybe should be revisited, or another one that I think about is the Tavern Overlay District. I don't know if they necessarily want to make this the contentious discussion of how that might shake out. That's not what this is. That would be separate and distinct. So as you guys think about stuff, just send it our way.
Fair enough.
Go ahead, Susan, sorry.
No, I just said fair enough. Yeah, good suggestion.
By the way, was there anything in this list that people had objections?
No, there's no real objection. There are just things that, you know, because you don't want, the mayor doesn't want to bite off too much at once. Because otherwise, this will take way too long, you know, the more you add into this. So I think the best thing for for you and Dave to do, if you are the two, would be to take your list. I mean, we've already, we already said it down, but it's your list, Justin. I think the best thing for it, for you and Dave to look through this list and you prioritize it. Take five things off the list, the ones that you feel are the most important to you and your board. I mean, if that's a reasonable number to you. So, you know, we start somewhere. If if it goes smooth, you know what I mean, and the changes go smooth, maybe more could be added. But we, I I think we need to be reasonable and and take off, you know, small bite to start and see how it works.
I have a question. There's going to be no outside consultant involved, correct?
Correct. Not going back to that group again, because some of these things are the, you know, if you look at my list, once they send it to you. I got a whole page of just cross references that they missed.
I think one of the things they're good at is coming up with ideas for definitions and coming up for ways of regulating issues. I think they, some of the work. Um, I think they, some of the wording, they, there's plenty of little details they left out, I'd agree with Steve.
Yeah, because the accessory structure one, Justin, you can simply add a line to that, I think there's an A and B under it. To say residential garages are excluded from the twelve foot. Minimum heights, but must be under the primary, you know, the height of the primary structure.
Or you can just put a taller limit, right, I mean, those are the little things, like take for example, uh, food trucks. Um, we may not want to create a special use permit. Or we may not want to create a food truck by right. In the code, but maybe a special use permit where Steve, you can, not even a special use, where Steve, you could potentially approve. Short duration food truck use, like for a uh, non municipal use. Event where they want to have a food truck for a day or two, there's no reason for us to have to go through all that approval. Uh, to get that temporary use.
Yeah, especially like a one day event or two day event should be, you know, we should authorize, that's what I did in the other municipality, it was. Administratively authorized, as long as it wasn't giving a major impact. Especially if it's like, uh, last year, they had went over at one of the realty offices for a day.
Right, whereas something like the Boku food truck, maybe that's more important, because it's going to be there for a longer duration.
Yes.
So, um, and that's where having a whole section dedicated to, you know, food trucks may make sense.
But I I do think that's one of the biggest things is a temporary use, special use permit, uh, short term retail. Somehow they should all be melted into one code, so there aren't three different. Things that are taking a piece out of, you know what I mean? Each one has a part of the other, and I think there should be one centralized code that would authorize. The use of of say a food truck or Charlie, you know, Harley day hots. Um, because technically that that zone is a mixed use residential, which. Kicks them out of that zone technically, so either by the use table, that can be fixed. You know, I mean, or.
I don't know if that was in the list, but changing from a residential zone to um, a light office zone or something like that might. Make sense to me, because that's never gonna, there's never going to be a dwelling there again.
Right.
Right, that's what I'm saying, a mixed use district that adds also residential and it should have a different. Should be allowed different uses versus a straight residential district.
Or, or in this case, what you do is with holiday. Because it's been approved once, if you have the persistency of an approval. Right, that can solve the same issue without it needing to be, you know, rezoned. And it's probably easier to do that than rezone.
Correct.
Yeah, my only issue with renewals is sometimes things do come up, um, like the farmer's market, for example, they. They do something different every year, sometimes in a different location. And we've heard some pretty significant comments of residents from time to time about that. Uh, where they report back and what the issue is, so that was something I think totally made sense to come before. Somebody and look at it.
I've never received a complaint on a farm market, I I mean, there there's not one complaint has come through this office in the three years that I've been here. About the farmer's market.
The one at the Spiegel Center?
Pardon?
The one at the Spiegel Center?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's because people walk down there and tell them to turn the music off at eight thirty in the morning.
I would hope that they come to me, you know, I mean, because we, I adjusted where the music went to try and keep that from happening, but if there's an issue. Then then that should be looked at as a location, or maybe set a timeframe, like you say, there there should not be music. Blasting a neighbor at eight thirty in the morning.
There shouldn't be music blasting in the neighborhood at any time.
Yeah, so I mean, but Steve, there were lots of complaints back when it was at Northfield Commons. Um, of people parking in bad spots, making too much noise. Um, and we did hear that, and we we had a little bit of a tough discuss discussion at one point when it came before us and we had to try to. Remedy some of that. Um, so that was, so what I guess I have a hard time doing is figuring out when does it make sense to exempt renewals? And when does it make sense to consider them, but that could be something brought up and listen to ideas people have.
Yeah, I would think if you have an official complaint about any function, then that should be reviewed again. Here and simple, if there is some sort of formal complaint in regards to a, an event, then that event should be looked at and reviewed again. And made sure that that same complaint would not, you know, I mean, would not come through again.
Yeah, one of the difficulties, though, is exactly what we just expressed here. A formal complaint is a lot different than resident input, that doesn't rise to the occasion to be formal complaints, and so. I think Justin's point's well served, it's just a matter of how do you do it? Uh, because I I do think there's things like the Christmas tree sale, like seriously, why do they have to come before us every single year? Anyway, alright, so I think the next step then is for that board or that. The the members of the different boards actually get together and say, hey, what are we going to do and try to do that reasonably quick, right?
I would say yes, and that that's something, I guess we could talk to the mayor and see when it could be scheduled, I know we're coming into the holidays. Um, in December, but I would think we, you know, I don't want to speak for the mayor or for Dorothea, because she hates special meetings. But um, to try and and get the committee together initially.
But it's not public, Steve, it doesn't have to be public, because it's only two members of each board, so we. We can just send an email around and get together.
That's true, and it just depends if you guys need a virtual, and then I would have to set that up, but that's not a big deal either.
And once you set it up, you could bounce, right?
I can make someone else a chair and I can, you know.
Yeah, okay.
And those of us that have other um, services like Microsoft Teams or, you know, whatever else we do for our business stuff, we can. Anyone can initiate a meeting and invite others to that.
That's right.
Alright, what I will do is I will email Lisa tomorrow. And get the two members of the H P B that wish to be involved. And then we'll uh, send around an email to everybody and see when we can work out to to sit down and and start the process.
Do you know the uh, members of the H P B or the the board itself?
I don't know who would, I don't know who is going to be on it, I would, I think probably um, Jeff Pollack might be the one, I know he. Showed an interest in it, and I don't know who else would be.
Okay. Do we need to make any sort of motion to approve Justin and I to do this or or not?
I, I don't know.
It never hurts to actually put it down in a motion.
You want to do it, Justin?
Sure, I'll make a motion to. Have the planning board sanction Dave Marshall and Justin Leitstra to join a ad hoc committee. For discussions. The trustees and H P B.
A second.
Okay, roll call, member Shannon.
Hi.
Member Ketchera. Member Loda.
Hi.
Member Marshall.
Hi.
Chairperson Belistrak.
Hi.
And that said, I think what was been proposed of continuing regular discussions of this at our regular meetings makes sense to bring back what. What's going on in any of these discussions, and I guess particularly when there's ones that stir up a little controversy and how to address them. Some of these things are just no brainers and that doesn't make any sense.
Right.
And we all agree that. Well, too many cooks uh are a problem, but also um. The, we make better decisions as a group than we do as individuals.
Great, thanks.
If anyone has other issues, does anyone have, can anyone? Uh, Steve already said this was too many to begin with, but does anyone have other things to add that comes to mind?
I think your list was pretty expansive, um, touched upon a number of the issues or concerns that I had. I, some of the like special use permits, what should be by right versus by approval. Um, and trying to increase flexibility for, you know, tenants, particularly. Uh, you know, restaurants and ta- you know, taverns and those sorts of things, I think could get a little more contentious than what this first. Uh, round might uh, want to do, but we'll see what happens when we get into those discussions.
I don't know, I, if you're going to, if you're going to do one thing big, we need to be more accommodating for bars and restaurants. Because we have a tremendous amount of hair salons.
Yep.
And absolutely zero, like nightlife. On the village streets, you walk down the streets at night, it's dead, there's nothing. And we have like a prime location, and there certainly should be more bars and restaurants. So, we are doing something wrong with the code, we are making people jump through too many hoops, so. If anything, like, that should be high on the list and.
That's been debated, that's of of all things to debate, that's the hardest, and it's been what, seven years, Dorothea, would you say there about? That's been a, that was the entire driver of the comp plan, that was the entire driver of the code updates to begin with. And they still couldn't figure it out, and there are definitely people that don't want this to be a nightlife district. And then there are definitely people that want more options, and that's more hard to sort that out, so.
It's it's a dead zone, it's a dead zone, there's no lights, everything shut down at five, it doesn't have to be loud and noisy, but it can be tastefully done, right? You know, we had a restaurant next to the tequila bar that the kitchen, right, is gone. Um, it's just, right, it's kind of a bummer. There's nothing, it's a, it's a constant, it's a constant cycle of shops opening and closing, opening and closing. That can't be good either.
I also think you're going to have discussions regarding the new marijuana law that is coming up as well, that's awesome, probably going to play. A section in your code talks, because that's something. If it goes through or doesn't go through, we still have to deal with zoning and dish- different issues relating to it.
It's my understanding, and I have not yet watched the board video. Uh, the last meeting, they passed local laws to opt out. With the idea of moving to a referendum, or where are we with that?
Nope, they didn't pass a local law to opt out, what they did is set to public hearing, which will be December fourteenth. Okay, at that time, the determination is that they are going to have a permissive referendum. To put the question to the voters, to let them tell us, so the board isn't actually making that decision, the public is going to make that.
But to get to that point, you have to opt out first in order to allow for the referendum.
Yes.
Correct, okay. Ideas to opt out, go to referendum. And it it's my understanding that. Um, all the uh zoning code and planning work that needs to be done to see where things might go. Is unlikely to be done in any way, uh, prior to the referendum, is that correct?
Um, referendum can be held within ten days, no longer, no sooner than ten days, no longer than sixty days, depending on what the board's actions are.
From the date of the law.
From the date of them setting the per- permissive referendum, so. Let's say on the fourteenth, they go ahead and say, we're having a permissive referendum that day. The determination from the board has been, they want to say what day that. Referendum is going to help, so I'm just going to go the longest, let's say, we decide on February fourteenth, everybody's going to vote. Whether or not, they want to state that at that meeting, so when you have. Sixty days to, you're not going to have enough time to put in zoning code again.
Right.
But also understand the factor is, none of this is going to be legalized, certain things aren't going to be legalized for a year or two, so you do have time, but. You're going to want to take time to look at it, whether that goes through or not, does not go through, because there's still things that are legally allowed. So you're going to have to address them in your code, no matter what.
Yeah, so that to me says there's probably going to be a second. Uh, code update in two thousand twenty-two.
I'm going to guess there will be.
Okay, so that also speaks to what we can tackle here versus delay and tackle together. Um, and what, what can we address sooner rather than later?
I think this committee is going to be get together for a while to strengthen, and it's probably a good thing to have the committee together anyway, to constantly review and use as a tool.
So, John, just a comment um, on your observation, I I don't. Disagree, it's a question of how do you address it, is there anything? Um, if there's anything in the code that you're like, you got to get rid of this, this is an issue, or you got to do this, right, send notes.
Yeah, I'm not looking forward personally to whoever wants to open a new business at Bank of America. Say they want to open a bookstore there, they need a special permit, just because it's over two thousand square feet.
Like to see the town buy it and turn it into a court. That would, that would be real smart, because they lease the building right now, I believe that the courts are.
Right. Is it a building for sale?
Yeah, but I guess Bank of America is like asking like ridiculous numbers for it.
I.
Um, and just so you know, John, there is a a restaurant opening up next to the Mexican or next to Tequila Ria.
Yeah.
They just changed it to Pittsburgh House, because I, he couldn't financially uh, do the Mexican restaurant.
The um, uh, just a brief comment on the Bank of America building, so as we think about any, you know, buildings and structures. It's always important, at least for me, to think about, if this fails as what it's been designed to do, what will it be next? And, you know, as you look at Bank of America, I sometimes look at the building and think, what could it be different next, and there's fairly few options, but. Steve, your point's a good one, right, it may serve well as a municipal build- building.
A parking, you know, I mean, you could add that parking lot into municipal parking, or the towns, town workers could park there, I mean, it would. It would serve a few purposes.
Yeah.
Fire department could buy it and do nothing with it.
Oh, wait, no, the fire department could get it, get access out that road, and then they could sell the building that they own.
I've been trying, talking to Ms. Rocket in regards to the house next door and see if that can move along.
Hey, one question on sign code, this is totally off subject, um, but when we think about sign code as it is now. Uh, for example, Dunkin' Donuts has a really tattered awful looking sign that kind of hangs there and flies in the morning. Is that permitted, or is that in violation of sign code?
Which, what are you talking about now?
Dunkin' Donuts, little flag banner outside.
There are Dunkin' Donuts.
Huh?
Where's there a Dunkin' Donuts?
Down by Newcombs.
Be honest.
You gotta be kidding me.
Yeah, it's a craft from uh, the Pittsburgh Dairy.
Yeah, be honest, Dave, now I'm going to have to look at that, I really didn't notice, but if there is a. A tattered flag, you can't have a banner on continual, you can have a temporary one, but it can't be a a permanent fixture.
It's been there for a while, and then, um, so one of the other questions is, um, like those pitch TP type signs, right? Oftentimes I find because our sign code doesn't allow for perpendicular sign, people then use these temporary TP signs. I I don't know about you guys, you know, but. There's a part of me that just finds TP signs to be annoying, and if you're going to let them, wouldn't you want the sign just on the building? Uh, and they look a lot nicer, I I don't know, I mean, these are. Or maybe neither, and somebody, you know, is it an enforcement issue where these signs go out every single day and that's okay? Um, I don't know.
You're talking about the, like, the little V signs that go on the sidewalk, Dave?
Yeah, that just seem to go up everywhere, there's a whole bunch of V signs, and I think, like, I've seen seven V signs in one day driving around. Why don't we just let them put them on the building, if we're going to let the V signs every day?
I I think that what, at least the last administration with Bob, you know, before this, had always said, as long as they're not in a public way or. Or creating a nuisance and they're out, you know, in the day and pulled back at night. To really not, you know, I mean, if it helps the business. You know, it's a good thing.
I'd rather see a vertical sign in the building sometimes than a V sign every day, but anyway.
Yeah, well, I'll I'll make a brief commentary about this, uh, previously, there used to be more permissible, and. They kind of clamped down on that under uh, the last, I don't know, seven years or something like that, like, it was around twenty thirteen. But a prior building inspector that tried to enforce it literally spent half his time enforcing sign code. Four hours a day, every day, chasing down random signs, and I don't think um, the amount of money. Residents are paying for that, for a building inspector to do that, fifty percent of their time is reasonable. But I think that certainly makes sense to figure out, what do you want to do to regulate temporary signs?
Yeah, and are, it's just like temporary use permits, are they actually temporary, if you grant them for nine months out of the year?
And then renew them every year.
Right, so if you're going to let temporary signs every single day for any day it's not snowing out. Well, maybe we should revisit our sign book.
Yeah, well, it's on the list, um, a question. What are people's thoughts of adopting that list? At the moment, uh, something to forward for committee review and. Have it as uh, from the planning board, right now it's a list I jotted up. Um, I don't know if people want to revise it before adopting it by the planning board, or if you want to leave it informal.
Informal.
An informal list to be revised as people come up with ideas?
Yeah, and actually. Yeah, and actually, I think at the end of this, if you've got two people from every board getting together, we're going to bring this list forward, you know, maybe you and I hash it out a little bit before we, you know, go to the board, and then at some point, that's going to come back to all of us and say, here's where we're at, here's what we're thinking, these are the things that we whittled it down to. We need input on A, B, and C, and maybe it goes from four pages to three, but they're buttoned up a little bit better and more specific. And even then, I don't know if as a board, we need to, you know, vote on it. When it's more final product, I think we probably could at least consider it that way.
Sounds like the opinion is leave it fluid. It'll go through some changes in committee, and then we'll see what comes out of it and forward that to the rest of the board. That makes a lot of sense to me.
All right. Like I said, what I will do is I'll reach out to HBB tomorrow, have them get their members, and then we'll see if we can figure out a schedule where we could all just sit down and have an initial meeting to find out how we proceed.
Sounds good to me. Anything else on the agenda, Justin?
No, that was, that was it. I didn't know where this would go.
Justin, can I?
Yeah.
Can I make one request?
Go ahead.
If Joanne, John, and Dave would look at their village email tomorrow into, in regard to some new 75 Monroe information.
Okay.
So I'll be, I'll be posting something, you know, tomorrow morning, so please take a look at it during the day.
Will you need a response before the evening at all?
Uh, no.
Okay. Only because sometimes I don't get to my village email till I get back from work.
No, that's okay.
Because the email system doesn't, you know, flow to my phone very well.
Oh, no. Yeah, I can't get it to my phone either.
Because we should be on Office 365 or Google Mail.
Not going there. We're looking at it. There's an expense ratio there that has to be looked at. I'm not saying it's perfect, and if you're having problems with your phone, please let me know. I can look at, see what the issues, make sure we're using the right coding. I've just fixed a couple people, and it's all working fine.
Yeah, I have it working fine on my phone, and that's very handy, because I get notifications of it, because I don't log on on the web browser all that often.
Okay. So Dorothea, you're saying bring my phone to your place?
If you bring the phone to the village hall, I will work my village. I'm not going to promise it's going to work. I'm going to promise if I can't get it to work, I'll get the IT people to get it to work, but we will get it to work.
But don't tonight make a motion to ask the village board to change the email server?
Not yet. No, we are looking at it. I'm not saying it's perfect. We had to make, I miss, I miss the old program. Trust me, I do, so.
Do you happen to have a, a document that would allow me to import this into Outlook?
I have the settings. I can send that to you.
I'll text you my, I'll text you my iPhone settings.
Okay, but what about for Outlook? Have you figured out how to pump it into Outlook?
Yeah, I have all the Outlook. It looks perfect in Outlook.
Oh, all right. Well, I'll have to get.
Because it runs Outlook on my computer, and I have an iPhone.
All right. So you've got an iPhone. It's working, and you got Outlook, and it's rolling into that?
Yeah.
I also have it working in Apple's mail program on my Mac.
All right, Dorothea. I'll be there.
I have it there, too. I have it in four spots. I'm really sick in the head, so it's going to all.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Dorothea, do you have an update on our, a new secretary situation for us?
Can come soon enough. I'm running four boards right, well, four, whatever, keep counting. We're just starting to get resumes in. I have to look at it. But again, with holidays, everything that goes on, it's probably going to be the first of the year, even though I'd like it sooner.
Basically, a posting has been added.
It's been, I'm getting few responses. I will say that. It's on Indeed. It's on our website. It's on Facebook. I begged any person walking down the street. It, it's, it's everywhere, but I think we're facing what, as a country, we're facing, getting people who want to do different positions and keeping good help and paying them appropriately is a challenge, especially for municipality.
Signing bonuses.
Well, thank you, Dorothea, for filling in. I know this is a lot of extra time for you, so thank you for doing.
Yeah, so things are slow coming. I apologize. But as I said, when I'm doing postings, I'm soon to be doing, like, I have a meeting tomorrow night. I'm doing like two to three meetings a week and getting minutes and everything else, trying to, and running around with my head cut off. So I am trying my best, and there's going to be a few slip-ups, and I'll do what I can.
Well, we appreciate you. Thanks for your work tonight.
No problem.
Much appreciated, Dorothea.
No problem. Thank you, Joanne.
I'd say we appreciate Susan stepping in and, and helping out here.
Yeah. Oh, that's right.
She came back after lunch. I was impressed.
Susan, have you been there all day and then come here for a meeting? It's a long day.
A little bit.
Hey, I used to do that, too.
It's a long day.
Where else would you rather be?
Yeah, well.
I'm in South Carolina.
If there's nothing else, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Trustee Shannon?
Hi.
Trustee Ketchera? Oh, trustee member Ketchera. I'm sorry.
Did it again.
I did it again. Member Loda? Member Marshall?
Hi.
Motion passes. Let's go home.
Good night, everybody.
Bye. Thank you.